That's a fisherman's shirt.
It's all Magellan.
It's not long sleeve. Okay, so it's like my white one with the Air Force logo on the back?
Sub shorts sleeves.
I have my Air Force, yeah, yeah, it has the Air Force symbol on the back, yeah. My, my Air Force one. Question for you. The one that was just over across the street from us. The dumpster that's overflowing. And every time we get a windstorm, rainstorm, all that trash is flowing out. Well, we got it, and it's blown down the street to the neighbors and everything. And now they're putting it into garbage bags and stacking it around the house, that house. Yeah, so if we could get them to... And, well, they still haven't tringed over the power yet. I haven't heard anybody from the, somebody from the city saying when they're gonna do that. I know they got a mark.
I've been shorts all day today, and it's been hot.
But, yeah, uh, okay, I was asking that question.
You can just come on in, grab a seat.
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Jay Cox.
Thank you.
All right, how are you doing?
Your wife's creation.
Is there?
Hi there, how are you?
Good, how are you doing? Anywhere, any seats open, yes, sir. I haven't seen a daughter from outside here.
Hey, Scott.
I have to show you this.
They're bringing the old one down, this is a brand-new building, yeah. So, yeah, it's like right in the same area, right behind.
Grab the back of one of these if you want.
Oh, yeah, with the committee in the middle? Ah, that's awesome.
And not to mention... So this was, this was the beginning. This is as it starts, this was the first group that showed up. And you already, you couldn't hear in the room. There's one, two, three, four, five conversations going, there's only 12 people there. There's five conversations going on. It's a party. But he was saying that she, uh, she had to create each one of those colors. She did research and asked for a pinata. And so she researched the pinata color.
I just wanted lots more of these, not habit brand, but the Magellan brand.
As important than I have. As important than I have.
It'd be nice once we can, we gotta get him. We're gonna keep her busy.
I gotta have buckets, because I got a whole bucket full of stuff.
We are, so far, we are...
I got a flashlight, I got a fan, I got Sharpie. I got reading glasses, I got a little notebook that I write all my notes in. I guess you'd call it a journal, but I don't call it a journal. It don't work. It don't work for me.
Good evening, Darren.
Because I forget where I put it.
Darren.
If I put them, I put them nowhere.
Good.
How you doing?
Long day, good, tired.
I'm, I'm right there with you.
Thank you for not saying, just to beat him. Moral support. So, we're, uh, we're gonna go ahead, that was, uh, that was a great idea, thank you. Um, we're gonna get a sign sheet in case anybody wants to, it's not mandatory. Um, if you can just... Uh, whatever, so we'll put this down in case you want us to, to get back with you. Uh, I've been trying to be really good about getting stuff out over social media, on the websites, um, on the Facebook sites. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Darren Schroder. Trying to make sure that we're keeping things moving along, so I appreciate you coming down. We're gonna open the meeting here in just a second, but I just wanted to take a second and say thank you for being involved with it. Uh, I know that there were a lot of questions and concerns, and so I just wanted to make sure that we're addressing those really well for you. Let us get our technical stuff set up here real quick. Go ahead and...
Are you all plugged in?
I'm all plugged in, but I think we need to turn those on.
Just gotta hit the... There's no wires to him. Supposed to make the color. It's not making the color.
I saw a, a thing linking on top.
I was expecting to see a run across the room. I don't know, I don't know if we get into that thing.
Tack it, no, tack it on the outside.
Yeah, yeah. One way or another, which is not showing. Would you know that has power down there, right?
Yeah, you can see it up right here.
Watch it live stream, gotta send them the link.
About 12, 15 turns.
I'm gonna leave cards up here also.
Some of those chicken salads.
My information on this on one side. I'm sure all of you know Sheena.
I'm a figment of their imagination.
Or fragment.
Oh, that's good thing or bad thing?
There we go. This should, uh, basically shouldn't have to tell it to extend, I don't think. See, just hit the button, that's all you're supposed to do. Yeah, we're all dark on this side, but I don't know if that... He just has to push his button. There we go.
What picture? Oh, no, no, that's not my kid, no, no, no.
See, it's grabbing my...
No, we don't have to, isn't that great? That's for a different reason.
For people to get on the livestream, what's the link?
Just go to the website in the headline meetings. And it's our, uh, it also pops up on our city Facebook page. Where it's transmitted to. So they can go to the city website, or the, I'm sorry, the city Facebook page. Or the city website.
Is that it?
Got your slide, good go.
Okay, so, uh, sorry, we're running just a little bit late, technical difficulties. We're gonna open up the, uh, the City of Castleville City Council Town Hall Meeting Public Hearing at, what is it, 6:34? I'm gonna go down the, uh, well, I'll open the public hearing right now. So, we're gonna go through, just to, to give you an idea, um, if you didn't see the agenda, uh, we're gonna go over, we're gonna take this a little bit out of order, but basically we're just gonna go over everything that we're looking at. So, I'll, I'll start on with a presentation, if that's okay? Unless you have, and I'm standing down here because I didn't, this, uh, this is not a city council meeting, it is a town hall meeting. Uh, we do have a quorum, so we have to be very purposeful about not talking about any decisions, we're not gonna talk about any decisions here. Uh, we're gonna talk about what we've done, what we're doing, what we will do, uh, and give you a chance at the end to, uh, to ask questions, to, to pummel me as you will, and, uh, no, just kidding. So, I, I started off this slide, I was looking for the right kind of visuals for this, and sometimes I feel like this, when I feel like things are out of my control and things are gonna happen to me that I don't want, that's kinda how I feel, and the fact that it was electricity, although it's static, kind of fit in there as well, and it was just kinda cute. So, I don't want you to feel like this, that's why we're having this town hall. This is, no decisions have been made, a lot of investigation, a lot of work has been put into this. I know that Sheena's done a ton of work on it, a ton of research, she's been working with previous councilmen, uh, council people, um, we've been working with previous mayors, we've been, uh, city staff has done just, they've gone through and done so much work on this. Chris is here from Schneider, our electrical engineering company that is helping us put this together, so just a ton of work to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, let's, with that, we'll get into it. Uh, we are gonna have a question and answer at the very end, if you don't mind, I will probably address, my hope is that I address every one of your questions, uh, every one of your issues, at the end, we will, I'll step away from this and let you come up here if you want to speak, just, I wanna make sure that people, uh, that are watching on the livestream will be able to hear you, so, uh, we'll do that, and, um, then I'll give you instructions on how to introduce yourself, and I'll go up on the dais at that point, if that's okay? Okay, great, so, let's jump into it, sorry, I'm talking too much, I do that a lot, and Todd's too far away to beat me this time, he normally keeps me in line. Okay, so, what we're talking about today is, uh, I, I wanted to back up from it for just a second, this is all about the Castleville Enterprise Fund. In the enterprise fund, that is utilities and airport, um, and, um, we're talking about a utility, I think that everybody knows this, but we own our own utilities, um, the top two we have full control over, the other ones, we wholesale in one way or the other, um, we do power distribution, so all of the power lines that are in Castleville, we own, we get the power wholesale from CPS, uh, with the gas distribution, we purchase that, CPS maintains the lines, but we own all of the lines, so we do have full control over that, um, and then the garbage service, obviously, we contract out with, uh, um, waste management, so, just kind of a high-level overview, just to remind you that, that these are our utilities that we're talking about, we're not going to somebody else, uh, we are managing this as a city. Okay, so, on the agenda, uh, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna recap why we're looking at the River Bluff Power System, I think that most people, uh, if you've been around for any time, you know exactly why, but I wanted to go back through and, uh, remind anybody else, because I, I believe that we have people from other districts who are concerned about the money that we, we're gonna need to spend on this, so I wanted to make sure that I gave everybody that full understanding. Um, we're gonna do a really high-level overview of the current electrical design, because I know that that's probably the most exciting thing, is seeing electrical diagrams. Uh, we're gonna review the options that we're looking at for the fix, um, we're gonna talk, uh, Scott is actually gonna talk about the funding process, uh, kind of an overview of where that is, um, and then we're gonna discuss what our process looks like moving forward, not what we're doing, but how we're going to be running through this, and at the end then we'll have the question and answer. Okay, so, why are we doing? I wanted to apologize for this taking so long, um, I really wanted to get this done earlier, but there's so much to go through, and it's just taken us a lot of time. Um, I did this a little bit earlier than what I wanted to, but I saw a lot of, I saw and I heard a lot of fear and, um, some false information that was going out, and so I wanted to make sure that I addressed that sooner than later, so that's why we're doing it just a little bit early, and thank you again for staff and the scrambling and the, the long hours that they spent putting this together to make sure that we could get it to you as early as possible. All right, so, next one, I love the kids, sorry, mine are all grown, and so this is the only way I can enjoy them. Uh, we have spent a ton of time, so, uh, the, we've gone through an investigation, a discovery, uh, in the investigation, we pulled up all the meeting minutes, uh, to review from council discussions, decisions from the budgets, previous budgets, like I said, we've talked to the, um, is it not showing? Um, so we've gone through to find out what decisions had been made before, uh, where everything, we just wanted to make sure that we fully understand, um, why, the, the things that we weren't here for, for those, the decisions, we wanted to get it as much as possible accurate. We looked at the work order history, um, like, really, the, all of the work orders that have been cut by the individual, uh, for the individual homes, um, and then staff's input, the folks that are actually out there working on it, having to deal with the problems that are actually implementing the fixes, you get it from the horse's mouth when you get the guys that are out there, and they actually have to deal with these things, so, you know, on one side you've got the engineers, and on the other side you've got the construction, and then you've got the operators, which are our folks that are out there every day having to deal with this kind of stuff. Uh, and then we went through the Schneider study from 2012 to understand what they had gone through, um, Chris had helped us pull the original investigator that had, had gone through that, uh, got some feedback from him, and got a bunch of information from people that were actually working on that. Then, the discovery, so, what we found was, we have had known issues for decades, and everybody that's here, that's been here for decades, knows that we have known that this is broken, and, uh, it needed to be fixed. So, some of those issues, the poly pads, those are the, the pads, the ones that actually did get pads put under them, because I know not all of them did, um, and the shifting soils under the transformers, the transformers have sunk, they've, uh, they've shifted, they've had issues with that, um, it is, um, it's all direct buried cable, um, it was put in the ground, just cable without conduit around, conduit's the right way to do it, so that you can, uh, deal with those portions, uh, and, uh, I get, I, I see some shaking heads and, um, rolling eyes, so, it's totally okay, uh, please challenge me on anything, uh, we, that's, that's why I wanted you here. I have heard, uh, a couple of folks that have dealt, been on council before, that have differing opinions on the conduit versus the not, but I'll tell you with the conduit, I know for a fact that it, uh, if we had this stuff in conduit, we could pull it out, put it back in, so, there's, there's pluses and minuses, so, just wanna make sure that you are not shy about that. And the money was never committed, so the first portion of it, um, the first portion of it, when they came through and did all of the, the fixes back in, it was, I think it was either 2012 or 2013, um, they'd done a bunch of work upstream from it, so, they brought in the, they cleaned up the three-phase power that, that feeds it over on Geneva Street, um, they'd fixed up, uh, the main feeds that came in from Constantinople, uh, we went through and read the reports on the things that they had done with that, so it seemed like that had done a pretty good job of cleaning up the power mostly, but we still continue to have other problems. So, there were minor improvements, repaired, greased, and monitored transformers, they replaced fuses, cabinets, about a third of the transformers had been replaced, um, and then they added fused elbows to help isolate outages, basically, it's just one more component that helps them isolate these things, what we don't want is a widespread outage, if, even if the system is failing, we want it to fail in one small place, uh, fail small and recover quickly. So, in 2021, this year, um, one of the first things that, poor Scott, I don't, I think it was the day that we actually hired you, and...
Yeah, he heard from me.
Sheena pummeled him, very kindly, uh, but he was hit with the, the struggle of, hey, this is something that, and we've been dealing with this in this budget cycle, um, and it is something, uh, Sheena says the can has been kicked down the road, and it has, and that was what our research had shown, it showed, uh, I've got all kinds of details about, like, it was said, we're gonna do it in the future, and then it got pushed out further into the future, and then it got ignored a little bit, and then it got pushed out again, and so, uh, we know that it's an issue, we know that we need to address it, we need to make sure that we can fund it, so, um, anyway, we got that part. And how do we know that it's, uh, well, that, what the city engineers, what Schneider told us was, that this is our highest priority electrical project. Understand, this is not our highest priority city project, it's not our highest priority utility project, but it is absolutely our highest priority electrical project. We have a lot of, we have a lot of challenges, you've driven on the streets, you've dealt with the water outages, you know what the, the challenges are, we got a lot of challenges, we have more challenges than we have solutions for, but what, we're working on them one at a time. Uh, we, we went through the history of service calls, and, um, and we know that the electrical lines, so the electrical lines were actually past the manufacturer's recommended use life back in 2012, they were already out of spec, um, you would expect failures after, uh, I think the, the usable lifespan is 30 years, and they were installed in 85, the majority of them, right? Okay, so, um, what I'm showing you here, this is a, a graphic, I'm gonna kinda walk through this, let me get a little virtual laser pointer. Okay, so, this is a heat map, if you look, this is, uh, an overhead view of Castleville. Uh, this is the regional part down here, um, so this is the south side of Castleville, this is the north side of Castleville, and this big red dot right here, that's River Bluff. So, the colors on here, if you can, if anybody can't see the colors, I've got another graphic that will show that, um, but, the, from the dark blue-purple being the least amount of calls, to the bright red, Sheena calls it the bullseye, right there, that is, that is River Bluff. So, this is another graphic, this is kind of a, an isometric view of Castleville, same kind of view, just at a little bit more of an angle, and, so this great big peak right here, that's River Bluff. So, these are the quantities, uh, the, the measurement here, that the height of the bar is the number of calls, so the fewer the calls, the lower the bar, the higher the calls, the higher the bar, now, this, remember, this is 2013 to present, the majority of the calls were 2013 through 2016, they've, they've eased off a ton since then, but I wanted to capture the entire time, um, and they are address-based outages only. So, what I'm showing you is, we took out all of the area-based, the cross-street-based, the, uh, citywide outages, and we just looked at individual calls to individual homes where they had outages, because ultimately, that's what we're looking at, is, we wanna make sure that you have, um, clean, reliable power that doesn't go out, that doesn't flux, that doesn't spike. Okay, uh, any questions on the maps, do they make sense? Okay. Um, and so this is a little bit more detail here, um, this is a bit of an eye chart, uh, and I'm gonna run through this really, really quickly, same, uh, we use the same data, I separated it out year by year, and what you'll see is, in the first few years, River Bluff was always in the red. 2016, it started waning, this one we had, um, 2017 and 2020, I'm not really sure what happened, because those are both red all over, but if you look at like 2018, 2019, it's not even registering on the map, um, because we have fewer service outages, uh, and then 2021, we've got, I think that that does not, I think that River Bluff is actually up in that area, so, um, I think that that covers like that general area right there. So, this is just to show you that the service calls have reduced since 27, starting in 2017, they have reduced, but they're still very present, and you feel the effects of that, you know that. I did this, so this is also, uh, I wanted to show you that, um, just the distribution, it's pretty much, there's a lot less in the middle, but there's pretty much all across, these are work orders, uh, in, uh, River Bluff since 2017, these are all the ones that we captured in here, but just to show you, it, it's not a localized, it's not a, an individual, it's pretty much across the subdivision. Okay, so what are the outage risks? These are the major ones, um, so sinking transformers can interrupt power line connections, um, the original transformers that were installed by the, uh, the builder, they were substandard, they were, uh, remanufactured, they were substandard, we've had lots of issues, we have been replacing them, uh, and this is even before, I mean, most of it has happened before I got here, um, so they've been replacing them as they've been failing, uh, it's, it's a lot of money to go through and, and replace them all, you kind of, if it's working and it's power, leave it, don't touch it, because if you touch it, it, you could let out the magic white smoke, and you don't wanna do that. But, it, those are, um, remanufactured and substandard, um, the cables are not in conduit, um, so copper corrosion and intrusion has happened, that was the, the latest outage, um, that happened right over by Sammy's place, um, that was, that was literally a, a line failing, and I'll talk about that here in a little bit. It looks like there, there are some cables in conduit, I don't know exactly where those are, but I know that we have some of them, and we have had some that have broken, so obviously conduit is not the magic bullet that fixes everything, because if you have roots and shifting and, and they're not put in there properly, then you still will have problems with those, uh, but we have found some of those. Cables beyond their manufactured, uh, manufacturer recommended life, which I already talked about, and you have a single source of power, and you have some long runs without redundancy, uh, without a, a second feed, and so, the, the outages affect a lot of people. Okay, so, current design, this is a really messy slide, uh, I don't wanna go too much into three-phase and single-phase power, I wanna just kinda give you a, a general idea of that, so, right here, this is Geneva, as you come into the, into River Bluff, um, this is the last pole that you've got in River Bluff, um, and then it goes to underground from there. Uh, it's kinda hard to see, there's actually three different colors on here, one color is for the C-phase, if you think about the phases, they're just individual power lines, like you see this waveform right here, this shows you how the actual electricity flows, but think of it as three separate wires that all provide power to different areas. Um, the, the three-phase is the best way to distribute it, and then you break it out into the individual phases for distribution, I mean, for, uh, for the connection. So, one of the phases right now goes back the, um, south side of River Bluff, and around, and up over here, goes across the street over by Arnie's place, and goes across and up, and then it comes across, interestingly, it comes across on the south side of here, and these transformers all feed the, the houses on the north, and it stops right about there. So, if something goes out over by Sammy's place, then the entire thing goes out, and I'll, I'll tell you, uh, I'm gonna do a quick overview of what actually happened, uh, during that last outage, so you can see kind of how we've had to patchwork it, so, I mean, kudos to city staff for being really creative to find ways to keep people up as much as possible, but you have noticed that when they, when you have these major things, even if we do something temporary, you're still out of power for a very long time, and in Castleville, in the summer, it's not a pretty time to be without power. Uh, so that's one, uh, there's another one that comes up here and goes around, serves just a little bit right there, and then it feeds up to here, and it deadens right there, and it deadens right here. So, again, if you have an outage that happens over here, this whole thing goes down. And then the last one, it serves the newer part right up here, comes up to, I think, this transformer that's over in that, uh, empty cul-de-sac, uh, and then it goes up, let's see, which one, oh, and then it feeds the north part right here, and the north part right here. Same kind of issues, you get it cut down here, and the whole thing goes out. Okay, so, just kinda high level on that. Um, let's talk about the existing design, so right now, the interior streets, so, basically, these feeds right here, these are all in the backyards. Now, the reason that the builder was, it was good, so, it's nice as a homeowner to have it in the backyard, because you don't see it in the front yard. Interesting, though, typically, like, I didn't even realize that, um, I went through, as, as we started talking about this, I started driving around just to see, you know, what was over, I mean, it's obvious what's overhead, it's all the old part where I live, um, but I went through the newer subdivisions, and I looked in San Antonio at all the newer subdivisions, really nice subdivisions, they're all on the front, Westtime Village, I didn't even realize was in the front, I didn't even think about it, but River Bluff, half of River Bluff is all in the front, so, um, the ones that were in the back, they did that, the, the builders do that because it's really cheap to run it through there, it's actually cheaper to do it like that up front, because you can service more houses with each transformer, so, it does save money up front, long-term, it costs you money, because it takes longer to, uh, to get things, it takes more time to coordinate with the families, so, it takes more city staff time, um, so, operationally, it's over the long-term, which is the way that we like to look at things as much as possible, um, it, it is, um, much more difficult. So, and I just listed all the different streets, I think that's probably too much information. And then the exterior streets, pretty much, I just showed you where it's, um, where it's in the front yards. And no, we're not talking, we're not telling you tonight that we're gonna put it in the front yards or the backyards, we have not made that determination, we have not made any determinations, we've uncovered issues, um, both issues with residents, issues with finances, issues with, um, installation and maintenance. So, the design issues, single fed, you have one, um, don't tell anybody this, but if you hit that pole right there at the entrance of River Bluff...
We're in trouble.
Don't do that, because you have, that's the only feed that you've got, if that goes out, that's a, that's a huge point of failure, that would be a very long outage, that would take us a while to recover from. I'm sure that they would make a liar out of me and do, do it really quickly, because they're just awesome like that, and our crews are crazy good, but, um, there are a lot of direct buried cables that, um, we know are, they are failing one at a time, we felt those failures, we felt that one just very recently, and we know that we will feel them going forward. And, uh, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Large areas of impact, and this is what I keep pointing out, if something goes out, it goes out for a large portion, they've been able to patch things through, but, um, it takes time to do that. All right, what's that? Everything costs money, um, and we try to look at the total cost of ownership, so we have to look at, um, a, a number of different things, and Scott's gonna talk about that a little bit, um, but it's, how much are we costing the people that live there right now, uh, versus the people that are gonna live there in 20 years, 30 years? How much can we, how much can we take on, what is the cost of money over that time? much can we take on? What is the cost of money over that time? What are the operational impacts? How much more will we have to bring on new staff to be able to support it? So all of these things, that's why it's taking us so long, because there's so many moving parts. There is no totally right answer, but there's a lot of wrong ones. And that's, that's typical. Okay, so-
Were you going to talk about the Sammy's break? Did you want to point that out on that last slide, or not?
I was actually, I want to point it out on another slide. I've got one more, but I appreciate you making sure that he keeps me honest. So, this is a very pretty slide. And I'll go through and explain it to you. One, what Schneider did, they're a great engineering firm. I've worked with them at my work, I've worked with them at the city. They know what to do. This is the way that you build a subdivision, so that it's fully robust, and so that you don't, any outages are very localized, you have a lot of recovery ability, and you can fix it very quickly. It has the existing, this is where the existing three-phase stops right now. If you, can you see this purple line that goes through here? So that purple line is a three-phase line. So, and what you'll notice on this side is, on River Bluff, it comes out and it goes out to Old Highway 90. So now you've got two ways in, two ways, or two ways in and out. They're not live at the same time, otherwise. Again, you let out the magic white smoke, and that's not, not pretty. But that way, if something goes wrong in a certain area, you have the three-phase distribution all the way, all the way through. It's more efficient, and it gives you a lot more ability to recover if something unexpected and dramatic happens with it. It is expensive, it is more expensive to do it like this, but if you're going to do it, it just, it provides you a lot more flexibility. The dots here, so we're going to talk about three kinds of phases. And one of them is a three-phase, the other one is a three-phase, and the other one's a five-phase. So the phases, sorry, Sammy was kidding me, he was teasing me about that. So one three-phase, we're doing three-phase power, so that's one three-phase. So I don't want that to get confusing. The three phases that we're talking about, where I showed you those lines, think about each one of these. So all of these red dots are just locations where that A-phase is going to distribute to. This doesn't, you'll notice that this design identifies the overall system. It shows you where the lines are running. It does not show you anything else about the distribution lines, and how those get. So obviously, we haven't gotten to the point where we can talk about front yards or backyards. So the blue is the B-phase, and then the green is the C-phase. And then the other confusion that I've had is, when this was first brought up, it was brought up, I think there were three phases in construction originally back in 2012. And the first phase was the one that I told you was already done. There was a second phase and a third phase, and I haven't completely gotten what those phases were, but it's good to know, but it's not imperative for our discussion. And then the last phase that we're going to talk about is the actual construction phase. If you can see these little gray pieces, so what Schneider did is, they sectioned it out and said, okay, so we're going to build out this first part first. So you got to start somewhere. And so they said, we're going to start here. That's phase one. And then we're going to move over here and do phase two. Then we're going to move over here and do phase three. So we're going to look at how we're looking at the phasing. We're not necessarily looking to stretch those phases out, like buy one now, and then buy one in another year, and one in another year. We're looking at the most efficient way to do this. And again, more on that in a little bit. This does include a full transformer replacement. I don't know exactly what our strategy is with the existing transformers. Again, two-thirds of them, we know are faulty. They haven't been replaced, because you don't want to touch them, and if they're working, let them go until they break. But if we start messing with them, then it's a good time to replace them. I'm sure that we'll use the other ones for spares or temporaries or whatever. So John will get all that figured out, and we'll talk about that as we go forward. I think that's it on there. Oh, and then the cost. So, understand, these are estimates. Phase, and these are the construction phases, the current construction phases. This, I think, is actually low. But this is the way that it was phased out. Half a million for the first, 366. So all of these, they're, they're, a lot of money totals up in this to over $2 million. I think it's actually going to be a little bit more than that. Once you figure out all of the things that weren't included, and all of the other stuff. But that's something that they'll, that we'll continue to refine. Before we make any decisions, we're going to look at, at the cost for doing it different ways, to find out the most cost-effective, both now and long-term, to do that.
And even though it doesn't pay, it's all going to be, in other words-
That's not-
... what we did that was before.
Right.
And then secondary, didn't add, and then nothing, then all.
Well, you put five cans on there, and you crush one, you get it taken care of, and then you just start kicking the other ones. Well, and understand that this is not a statement by me that we're going to do this all at once. That is my approach, that is my philosophy. I believe in, there are, we have so many things that we've got to do here. I would rather identify those, get those out into the open, and we talk about them every year, and we go back and we reprioritize. And to previous councils' credit, they have been doing that. They have been reviewing this. Most of the councils, when we look through the budget cycles, most of them have looked at this again and again, and said, no, this is not our highest priority to finance. We have taken a different approach on this council, and we have approved, at the beginning of the year, we approved funds to make sure that it got kicked no further, and that we actually take some time to look at it. So again, you can thank Sheena for beating on us and threatening our lives. And, no, she's done this in, in cooperation, and done it very, very well. She's made sure that she is representing the place where she lives, and the people that she lives with.
Can you just, Scott, you have listed there, is that a transformer in the back or the front?
Rough guess. There are so many details that are not in here. I think that the first run that they went at it was distributing them in the fronts. So that, that's my, is that correct?
Can we hold the questions to the end, because there's a couple of things like that that I can address.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Okay, so, challenges. If we put in, now this is, so, in the backyard, if we go back through and we put it back in the backyard, you have existing utilities. There are places where people have either encroached on the easement, or they've gotten either really close to it, or some of them have gone over it. There are multiple pools, multiple sheds. There's a lot of stuff that can, that can get messed up. And so that creates a challenge, both for the homeowner, well, for the homeowner, for the city, for the installer, the amount of liability that they have to cover to be able to deal with something like that, if they are held liable for breaking anything that's in the easement. Lots, lots of challenges with that. We do have existing utilities in the backyards. I've got some, I've got some diagrams of these that I'm not showing in the presentation, but if you want, at the end, I can show you. But basically, the power and the gas, they, the existing power and the gas lines all go, like, right up the middles of the backs, where you saw that the power is going as well. The easement issues, so the encroachment, I got ahead of myself, potential damage to property, and then the cost associated with that. The operational efficiency, again, is diminished because of the coordination that needs to happen. And so, in the backyard, so need-
That would be, that is in the front yard.
That's in the front yard, yeah.
That should be on the other side.
Well, I've got it on the other side. So basically, that, that was misstated. So we have, the service lines that are back there are existing. We would reuse those service lines, so we don't have to trench if we put it back where it was before. The problem with that, and totally doable, the problem with that is that those are the lines that are failing. And so if it happens, you're still going to have to dig it up, but you're going to have to deal with an outage to be able to do with it. So, and those are the, beyond their, their existing lives. And so that's something else that we've got to look at. It's the cost to the city, it's the impact to the homeowner. And so, just, again, we're trying to point out, or trying to understand what all of the implications are, so that we can make educated decisions. If you go to the front yard, for the ones that don't already have it, you still have existing utilities. So you have water and sewer in the front, you have communications in the front. I think that there's still, there's some, is there communications in the back, like Com-Zoom or AT&amp;T in the back, in the middle things? Yeah. Okay, so, in those, it would be in the back where you're going, and you have the potential for those. But for the other ones, it's up in the front. So for everyone that we, if, if it's in the back already, and we have to move it to the front, we're going to have to run new lines. And so that means that we have to trench through your front yards, and go from that transformer, maybe bore under your driveway, trench up to the house, get it up to where the utility is. Big challenge. I'm sure that at least one person has a sprinkler system that somehow, it's kind of like a tornado to a, to a trailer park is a trencher to, to water lines, to sprinkler lines, they'll find them. Sprinklers, tree roots, plants, all kinds of problems. And honestly, the biggest thing is change for some. Change is a big thing. That's that picture that I showed you at the beginning. That change, it's terrible. I, I don't enjoy it, and I want to make sure that you know that we know that that's a problem. We understand that if, that if we collectively determine that that's the best way to go, it's, it's hard to change when you're used to something. All right. So, one of the, one of the alternatives, I really appreciate the fact that Chris is really looking at this. He's like, you know what we could do, if we wanted to create some of that redundancy, greatly reduce cost, we can just, basically, we tie, we bore under and tie those two together, and that creates the redundant loop. We can do the same thing over here, tie that in, and tie that in. Now you've got a redundant loop. And this is the biggest, longest bore that we'd have to do. We wouldn't trench, because that's incredibly disruptive. It's, what is it, four or five times more expensive to bore, but then we're not tearing up sprinkler lines and people's front yards and all of that. What's that?
Driveways.
Driveways, yes. So that is a possible solution. We loved the solution for about five seconds, and then we realized, if, if the main lines weren't having to deal with impending doom, if we, if we expected that we could get another even 20 or 30 years out of the existing lines, this would be a great solution. It's a good, low, low-cost, immediate fix that creates some of that, that resiliency to keep you from being out for too long. The problem is that we know that we're going to have to go back and do the other one anyway. So if we put the fix in, we're wasting half a million dollars, maybe more. So, like I said, we loved it. We love the fact that he's looking at this. We love the fact that Schneider's being creative with this. They're really using their brains on this, and trying to find anything that we can do to not do a full, I mean, we're literally ripping out what the, what the builder did, and we're reinstalling everything. That's really expensive, and it's, it's a shame that we have to do that. But, you know, that's, that's what the city does. So I don't want to go into too many, and this, you can see, this is, this is a part of actually the exploration that we'd gone through, and we're weighing everything against it. And so these, these are some of the things that we came up with, with these pieces. Okay, so funding. I'm going to hand this over to the, to the smart man in the room.
I don't know about that.
Let me aside from, I meant that, Doris, if it gets to me.
All right. So we're talking a little bit about funding, and mainly, I just want to kind of explain the difference between general fund and utility funds, and how this works. Keep in mind, I try to tell my kids this, you know, parents are just kids that grew up, right? And city council members are just, you know, residents that got elected. And so there's a lot of things, and city managers or city administrators are just guys that chose a profession, probably unwisely, I don't know. But I enjoy what I do, actually, I love what I do. But the point is, in reading through his minutes, as Darren and I, as the mayor and I, read through those, and we went back with Deborah's help, from 2012 to present, it was evident that even the council members, the elected officials, misunderstood the relationship between the general fund and the utility fund, and what pays for what, and how that works. So I'm going to go over that very briefly with you tonight. So the general fund-
Scott, before you go on, since a lot of people may not know who you are.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Arnie. I'm Scott Dixon. I'm the city administrator. And it is true that Sheena beat up on me on my very first night. I wasn't sure how long, because she, she was, she was very adamant, that, I think we, I almost thought we were going to have to arm wrestle, because it was like, I'll, okay, fine, I'll let you do it for, but the next meeting.
Right, right.
And she lives right across the street, so she can, she can help me down very easily. Have you met her dogs?
So for those of you who don't know, Scott also is in River Bluff, which is not why we're doing this.
No. Yeah, I made that clear in the first one.
This is not why we're doing this.
Once I learned where it was, I was like, oh, shoot, people are, I'm going to be accused of doing this. But actually, the first phase is not, doesn't affect Sheena or I. Now, if we do it all as one project, which would be my preference, that is, that would be the best use of ratepayer dollars. Because anytime you remobilize, and you do it in bits and pieces, it really is ill-advised. But to their credit, the council was prepared to just use the cash they had on hand. The problem is, they don't have enough. And we're going to talk about that right now. So general fund, the general fund is your tax-supported general fund activities. So that's your parks, it's public spaces, like this city hall, it's your streets that you drive on. And those are property taxes that we pay every year. The portion that is collected for the city, that's what that portion, that's, that's what those dollars are used for, in addition to paying for all the other things that it takes to run a city, right? Enterprise funds, is anything, in, in other cities where they have like a convention center, that would be an enterprise fund, more than likely, if they own the convention center, if they own other places like that. But for most cities, it's your, your utilities. And here, we have them all. Everything except for garbage. Last city I managed, we actually had garbage as well. And then we, and some cities are actually branching out into internet as well. But, and then we have the airport. So the airport's also considered an enterprise fund. And what distinguishes those is, one, how they're accounted for, the actual accounting practices for each of those funds, but also who pays for what. So whereas it's the residents and the homeowners that pay for your, your property taxes, or pay property taxes, ratepayers pay for the utilities. And a lot of times, it's the same person. But sometimes it isn't. Especially when you have, you know, renters and other folks, they aren't paying their property taxes, but they are going to be paying for the electricity, most likely. So they're going to be a ratepayer in that, in that regard. I wanted to show you what our fund balances look like. So currently, a fund balance is simply the amount of cash that the city has that's in excess, well, not always in excess, but whatever amount of money they have in the bank that's tied to that fund. So the general fund, the property tax side, utility fund, the enterprise side. On the utility fund side of the house, this is all of our utilities, this water, gas, sewer, electric, all of them combined, they're all in one piggy bank, if you want to think about it that way. They, they have approximately $3.7 million in cash reserves, or just money sitting there. Now, it costs $7.5 million to run them collectively. That's without doing any type of capital investment. So what we're talking about tonight, without doing that, it's about $7.5 million to run those utilities for a year. Now, generally accepted accounting practices recommend that you maintain at least 90 to 120 days for, in fund balance reserves. So that's one of the things that we aim for, both on the general fund side and the utility fund side. But obviously, we have a few more days than we actually need. We have 210 right now, and that's just, you just take that cost, divide by 365, divide the amount you have in cash by that number, and that gives you your days. So we have 210. The council is, has already been stated, actually appropriated $650,000 of that $3.7 million of the utility fund reserve, the collective reserve amount, to be used for this project. At my behest, we, we looked at, at least putting in what's called a reimbursement resolution. So I first looked at, with the mayor and the council, is this really the most important thing? And as you heard the mayor say, yes, it is for the electrical system. It's not necessarily the highest priority as far as a capital project, when we look at streets and water and sewers and the other challenges that the city is facing. But it's definitely the highest in electrical. And you have a very strong advocate in Ms. Martinez, as the councilwoman. And so this was something that was definitely important. But I did persuade them that if they were going to take that step to cash fund it, at least give us the opportunity, or the option, to pay ourselves back in a bond issue, if that were to happen. And it's important that as we talk about this, we're going to talk about what bond issuances are, and why we use them. But it's, I also want to state, kind of for the record, the council has not made that decision. And we're going through that budget process right now. You're welcome to attend the budget workshops, and come to next Tuesday's meeting, where we'll talk more about this. We've already had two, and then we had a retreat as well. But as I shared with the council, my goal as their city administrator was to, one, adopt a balanced budget. So the general fund, the expenditures will not exceed revenues, we aren't going to have to use fund balance to do that. And then secondarily, to set them up with the ability, if they chose, to be able to go and issue debt on the general fund side, and on the utility fund side, to be able to go and borrow some funds to do some major projects, just looking at the city and the needs that the city has. So we're, that's the position I think we're in for this next budget year. Your council will be charged with making that decision, and I do not envy their, their position, because, you know, just like us, they're ratepayers and taxpayers as well. So it's, it's not easy decisions. Although people do like to sometimes try to make it sound like it's a really easy decision. It's not. So issuing debt, why do we do that? Generally, it's to pay for new capital investments. These are the things we're talking about tonight, the electrical system, but also streets and water and sewers, I mentioned before. And because, we do it because, if you think about it from an equity standpoint, so using the cash on hand charges everyone in this room for 100% of those upgrades. But the upgrades themselves will be there for how long? 25, 30? And how long are the ones that are there? They've been there for a very long time, since 85. The ones that we put in, when we rebuild that system, we certainly hope we don't have to touch this system in any major way for at least 20 years, but maybe 30, with the design efforts that Schneider put in. So the people who come be- So the people who come after us, the people buy houses and move in, and this is for the entire city, mind you, it's not just River Bluff, if we use our cash on hand, they didn't put any of that money in. And they're not going to be, they aren't going to have a portion of that cost because it's not going to be reflected in the rate. So one reason to issue debt, debt actually has to do with equity. But the other reason is because it allows you to do a lot more, right? So our, right now, the cost to borrow a million dollars per year is about $72,000. And that's a conservative estimate. So you go out to the market, you borrow a million bucks, it's going to cost you 70, and this is a 20-year note, a 20-year payoff, it's about $72,000 a year to pay for that. So you think about what all you can do with a million dollars versus 650,000, or if you want to go and try to get streets and water and sewer, as we talked about, trying to put together a plan where we might borrow as much as 10 million between the utility and the general fund and really get some major projects done for Casterville. Now is a good time to do it. Also because of the local rates or the, sorry, the bond rates. Mississippi bond rates are at a historic low. I don't know how many of you watch that or are aware of it, but if you look at your, your savings account and what it's paying, the great news for, for taxpayers, as taxpayers, is that when your city borrows funds, they borrow at those rates, at that half a percent, which is, which is fantastic. So I, I don't know if you want me to cover next steps, but really, tonight's just about getting your input. It is a public hearing. It's, it was intended for River Bluff. Again, at great, at the admonition of Councilwoman Martinez, really insisted, we need to do this, we need it, and obviously Darren's watching the social media feeds as well, to put this out there, make sure we're getting good information out there, and also getting feedback on things like, because there are several, several options, as we've stated. We are looking at, so I think someone asked about trenching. One of the issues with trenching in the backyard is the cost. But there's kind of a trade-off because there's going to be trenching in the front. When you go, when you do the front yard, we're going to be able to do a lot of that with boring, but you're still going to have to trench new lines to every single house where the transformer is currently in the backyard, right? So there's a cost there. There's not as much liability. These types of things you're disrupting generally is sprinkler systems, it's a low-cost item, or plants, it's a very low-cost item. Whereas in the backyard, if you're having to do that trenching, the same trenching work, we've got sheds and pools and other issues. Just anecdotally, Schneider's already reached out to a couple of contractors to see what their feedback was on this particular project, just trying to get an idea of cost and really estimate well. They said, just again, anecdotally, if you went in the backyard, it'd be about twice as, as high the cost would. And most of that is due to liability. It's really not due to the effort of the Florida. They're going to be constrained on the type of equipment they can use and where they can set up in that backyard. It only runs so long and so far underground. So that's a little bit of an issue in that, in that backyard environment. All that's to be reflected in other costs. But I think at this point, Darren, if you're ready, let's open up questions.
Well, I do want to watch just a little bit more about this, touch on this. Does anybody catch the reference?
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know why it's here, but, but I am a little jealous. So that's Doctor Who, right? That's the TARDIS.
Yeah.
Okay, but.
So we're looking into the future, how are we going to deal with it?
Okay, all right. He's a time traveler. He's a British time traveler, Doctor Who.
I thought I was really clever and my wife is like, nobody will have any idea what you're talking about. I got some eye rolling from her as well, it's okay. So, and this is, I wanted to put this on here because these are the next steps. I want you to know exactly what our process looks like. This is the first step in providing that process to you. So we're getting feedback today. It's, it begins today, it doesn't end today. We've been working on getting feedback. As Scott said, I do pay attention to the social media feeds. I try and stay off of them. Every once in a while, I make a mistake and actually post something, for that I apologize. But I try not to. But I like to watch it because I want to know, a lot of times, people will put what they're afraid of on social media. And I want to know, you know, I want to know what are you afraid of? I want to know what have I not thought about or what has that staff not thought about? It takes way too much time and I really don't enjoy it. But I think it's, it's an important part of the job. So we'll go through, I put August on here. I may have overcommitted us, so I'll let staff kick me in the rear if that is the case. I'd like to finalize our validation, finish our due diligence, come up with a solid answer sometime in August, if at all possible. We are in the middle of budget season, so staff has already worked pretty hard. So we're going to push for that. I won't commit to that, that month, but that's what we're shooting for.
Well, I'm going to tell you the big issue. So you've already funded this. They've got the funding allocated. Phase one project is a, you know, phase one of this. But again, my concern for the residents and for the city is we don't want to just crush that first can and kick the others. And there's, and there is no plan, as of right now, for the other phases. So it's my intention to bring this back as a CIP project where we do the entire amount. And then we change that funding, that 650, that turns into debt service for some period of time, which also eases the rate burden. So the city's really, I didn't mention this, but, but as a city, you're really well positioned to be able to go issue some debt. Because you've got, you've got room in your property tax rate and in your rate, your actual utility rates, where we won't, we can actually use, because we have fund balance, we don't have to hit somebody and shock them with a huge rate, not in the first, second, third, fifth, you know, it'll take five or six years before you see any type of rate increase. So pretty substantial rate increase. So that's, that's a really, that's a positive thing. A lot of cities are not in that position. They've got to deal with whatever their challenges are and it's all eaten in the same year. We've got the ability to stress that out, sorry.
Oh no, that's totally good. One of the things, one of the incorrect statements that I've heard a lot, this is why I wanted to make sure that we touched on the finances part. I know that's not what, really what we're talking about, but it really is as well. I've heard so many people saying, so, why is the city so broke? And it's getting the correct information out. When you look at your own ability to borrow a house, a car, if you've got plenty of cash, you can go and pay cash for it. The city doesn't have enough to go and pay cash for stuff, like just out of that. We have to finance some stuff. But you also have to look at your debt-to-income ratio, just like you do as a person. And with that, it's, we are like, super solid. There's been a lot of debt that's fallen off, not, barely anything that's been put on since then. But my goal is to continue to reduce, I don't know that we can reduce. I don't like the cost of utilities in Casterville. I don't like the cost of taxes in Casterville. I have to pay them, you have to pay them. And I kind of like to keep my own money and I think that everybody else is as well. So what we do, we want to make sure that we don't overpivot and start taking money away from you because we made the mistake. And so that's why we're being this careful. And that's why I've gone into all of this detail, to let you know, we are being this careful because it matters to all of us as well. With the other ones, I don't have, I don't have a date for these. So we'll finish this, we'll finish the, we'll finalize the phased approach. This is the construction phasing, not the three-phasing or the other three-phasing. This is the construction. We'll figure out what that looks like, the most efficient way to do that. Determine the funding, funding strategy. And then we'll come back for another town hall and present our findings. So this is the first town hall. There will be a second town hall. And this I want to make very clear, the council decision is purposely after that. So we will not make decisions until we've talked to you again, until we've told you what our challenges are. And I know that we may have to make some, some tough choices, we may not. We may come back if it costs us twice as much and it's only half of the homes that are affected, it costs us a quarter more. If we can afford that and it makes sense and it's the best way to do it, then absolutely we're going to do that. But we don't know yet. So town hall, come back with a council decision, and then we're going to track it to completion. No more kicking, cans stay where they are. If we need to make, like, if there are decisions that need to be made, if we do it correctly, we don't have to go back and change our minds. I would rather be really, really careful and make that decision very, very slowly than have to go back and change our mind. Okay, I've talked enough. Your turn. So what I'm going to do, if it's okay, I'm going to step back, I'm going to go back up on the dais. I'd like you to come back, come up to the podium, just, if you would, just state your name, just so we know who you are, and ask your questions, place your concerns, let us have it. We, we really want to hear the true and honest thoughts. Does anybody need to see anything before I disconnect the display?
I just leave it up if you can, just because it'll be good to.
Okay, I can do that. All right. So, if you'll come up to the microphone, that way people will know you're here.
My name is John Collins. And I've lived in River Bluff for 26 years. In fact, our house was the first house in the northwest portion of River Bluff and the third house built on River Bluff Street. I have lived in 12 different states for at least a year. I've lived in a foreign country. And I can tell you that the electrical grid in River Bluff is the worst over the time period, that 26 years, is the worst I have ever experienced.
Great, thank you. You know, I was talking, I know, I talk too much. Tell me to shut up if you. I was talking about, I came back over so Todd could reach me. He kicked me. So I was talking to my wife about this. The, the homes in River Bluff are beautiful and we're saying, you know, these are really, really nice homes. It's a really nice neighborhood. How terrible is it, those of you who have bought since then, you get in there and you're like, we've got this great house. And then your power goes out. And then it goes out. And then it goes out. And you didn't know that that's what you were getting into. There's no disclaimer, there's no need for them to tell you that. And that's, that's what really just gets me with this. Okay, your turn, please.
Anecdotally, I've only lived there since January. I think I've had four or five, at least.
You guys are beloved.
Five, yeah.
When a circuit hits there, it gets knocked down there, it's, it's reflected throughout the city, it, it affects other people. We all feel it. Not as badly, but we all feel it.
And I've been telling everybody on council since you guys elected me, my first term and now my second term, about how, when I first moved here 16 years ago, every Sunday we would have power outage, like clockwork. It was, you get up, next thing, oh, there was power coming. And it would slowly come back on, but that was every week.
Is that a forced day of rest? Not in July.
Especially during the summertime.
Yeah.
So, and then we have our, you never know when it's going to go out. The wind could blow and we could lose power. Rain, we'd lose power. Some of the neighborhood loses power, some doesn't. And then they have to go and do the backfinding mission of where in the neighborhood went out and then try to do a Band-Aid effect or temporary things to where we have exposed cable on top or cable going across the road to just keep us running until they can get a temporary, temporary fix on that. So it's been a very aggravating thing for the residents of River Bluff. And then we have, you know, people that are like on dialysis. We have children that are on constant medical devices and everything, respirators and everything. And so when we lose power, I mean, it could be very damaging or cause loss of life, depending on how long we've got power, so.
I think that living in, living in the United States, with the grid that we have, although it does fail every once in a while, once in a snowmageddon, we have the right to have reliable utilities and to the best of our ability. We can't always do these. We're looking at the capital projects that need to be done. We can't make everything perfect right now, but we can start. So, does anybody else have any questions? Yeah, please.
My name is Jose Ramos. I moved in here two years ago. And like you said before, if I would have known about this, I probably wouldn't have moved over here. But the house is nice, a half, okay? But one thing I've been looking into, I don't know if you want to help me out on this, but I've been looking at generic home generators. Quite costly, but I think it was worth it because I thought it was just a thing that's been happening here in River Bluff all the time, you know, when the power goes off, especially that four-day freeze, freeze we had, you know, but I've been looking into it. It's not cheap, but I will have power all the time, you know, because I thought it was just a thing that happens all the time at River Bluff. But since I seen this for the first time, wow, that's a lot of years. That's a lot of years for it to be like that. And I don't know why we have to pay for it because, you know, it was done by construction crew way back then, but I just don't understand why this happened, that's all. That's it.
If I could get back and get a hold of their throat and get that money from them.
Thank you.
So we have to be careful. Part of it's substandard, but part of it's just the changes in, in building standards have changed immensely since the adoption of the International Building Code, which was not in place in 1985, I don't believe. There might have been some codes that were in place that weren't followed, I can't speak to that. But, but I don't want to put all the blame on, on the builder because I, I don't know that they didn't build improperly necessarily for their time period. But certainly, it's better today. There are better options today than there were.
Okay, you're right.
You have another, another issue that some parts of town don't, which is that, that we're all on that hill and that we have basically an underground water, the soil shifting in that area is particularly bad compared to the rest of Casterville. Yeah, so the soil shifting, I think you might, might see us in other places, in other more established subdivisions in Casterville, except that they don't have the shifting soils like we do, so it hasn't, they haven't had as bad of an effect. But Country Village has similar problems. So when we looked at the areas and you saw where the Country Village had a similar number of issues, but slightly different reasons, I'm sorry, I'm taking your time.
Oh, no, you're fine. I'm easy. I'm Dave Brown, 109 River Trail. None of that stuff there, believe it or not, I'm going to say at least 80% was built to code. I built subdivisions and I have my entire life, along with custom homes and all that kind of stuff. And that is not right. They're out of easements. For example, the pedestal and telephone and cable box are about 10 feet from a house way outside the utility area or the street. And none of them work, except for the electric, whenever it works, if you know what I mean. So I think this is something that has been needing to be corrected for a long time. The building codes or even common sense, you know, tells you, if you're going to do that, what you have to do. Not to save money or anything else, but the cost is the cost when you put in a subdivision. That's what it is. You can't go cheap.
For sure.
That's all.
Can we use some straw poles, like, like, front yard versus backyard, that kind of stuff?
Actually, if you, if you wouldn't mind, come on up and tell us how you, how you feel about that, what your, what your concerns, if you have power, how many have power in the backyard right now? Okay.
About half.
I would love it if you'd come up and just tell us what the impact to you is. Or the other way, anything that we've talked about, I really want to know what your. Well, it's your preference and what your concerns are. Just so that we're fully aware of, of all of it.
Okay, my name's Dan Orvice, live in 205 River Bluff. I've lived there for 20 years now. And I've been retired military, so I've been overseas and gotten used to a lot of different problems and stuff. So it used to be really bad, it's tolerable now. Not perfect, not good, but it's tolerable. So you mentioned three phases, correct? I just want to make sure, the funding for the 650,000 was for only phase one and not for all three phases?
So it's actually, so that's where it got.
Very good.
Three phases of power, five phases of phases of construction.
Of construction, got it.
And that's where I could pull up a slide.
I see, I got it, I got it. And then I was going to ask, the next question was, okay, you had different phases, I guess.
Five phases of construction and a first phase.
It's 650.
Which is the 650.
Okay.
That'll cover that first phase.
Very good. So, for, I understand that y'all get a franchise, a franchise fee of 4% from CPS, is that correct?
Only for the, the services that are outside of the, our service area. Not in River Bluff.
So we're not part of that, 4%?
No, so let's, let's separate out, CPS provides us power wholesale. We buy that from them at a certain rate, we handle all the distribution and we sell it to ourselves.
Right.
Homeowners, the service.
It's not part of River Bluff.
Uh, so if you go out to, like, what, the Chevy dealership, they get their power from CPS, so...
They don't get it from us, we do not bill them.
Right.
Right.
And that's where that, that's where that franchise fee is collected, and it's actually 5.5%.
Okay. Good, so my, my question was whether that's going toward the 650 and semi-point, because...
Well, it goes into the enterprise fund, and that's, that's what we're talking about. Alstacia Oaks, we've got almost 1,000 homes and a bunch of retail, all of that is gonna be on CPS. So, that portion will go, we don't have any overhead when it comes to that.
I see.
And no, it is not more financially beneficial for us to give over our power system to CPS and have them charge a franchise fee, 'cause I can almost guarantee your property tax rates would go up, because we actually do need the funds that come in from the enterprise.
I understand, no, thank you. So, I, my next question is, you haven't talked about from start to finish, how long is that gonna be? Once you start Phase One and finish Phase Five?
We don't know yet.
Okay, that's...
Again, this is, this is, you have almost all of the information that we, that we have.
I get you.
The 650 was just, we wanted to get something on, if we just started...
So we don't know a timeline, like, Sam, Mark, I'm sorry.
Chris.
Chris, close. No, no, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that you have an estimated time of when Phase One and Phase Five, you know, like, is it gonna be a year-long?
The issue is we don't have funding.
Right, I understand that.
Okay, well, so you're asking, there's two questions there. One is, when is the city gonna do it? And the other is, how long would it take?
No, 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 my, I know, y'all have to decide that, that's not my question.
Yeah, if you're asking is construction.
Yeah, how long is the construction phase? Just so we, the residents will know, hey, once it starts, within five months, we're gonna be done, that's all. That's all it is.
Probably six months, in that range.
What phases are we speaking about?
Well, no, I'm totally off.
Yeah, just the first one, I'm in River Bluff, so we're good.
Well, let's talk about the entire thing. What do you think for the entire, if, if we put it all on the books, and we said we're gonna do the entire thing, phases one through five, even if they do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, it goes...
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably nine, nine months maybe. And it just depends on what obstacles they come across.
Correct, I understand.
Our builders take it as that.
Roughly about a year from start, from start to finish.
We're gonna say two years, it'll take us two years.
No, he said it.
Under promise and over delivery.
Well, this is probably on phases 1 through 3, because that's the backbone of the city. And that's, that's the major, that's probably one of the first ones that will be happening. Whether it be one or three, that'll probably be the two that could start first, I would say. But that's the biggest thing, is to get that additional leak feed in there, if there's some...
Well, again, the, the item that I've got on there, in terms of our process, we have to figure out what that phasing is, how long it's gonna take, how much it's gonna cost. We've got a lot of, all of these things, that's part of our investigation.
Well, once you sit down and talk about, I wanna talk about the decision-making process for the council, and where they're at, and why. Darren, in the very beginning of his, his kinda speech, he talked about the fact that he's doing this a little earlier than he intended.
Correct.
And that's because he doesn't have all the information, and nor do I, and I'm gonna explain what's missing and what we're trying to put together. But let me speak real quickly just to the, to that contractor side of things. One of the challenges we have is that Texas is experiencing a housing boom, I don't know if y'all are aware of that. But it's very, the contractors that do that work, that do this electrical work that we're looking to do, it's essentially you're building a subdivision, that's what you're doing from an electrical standpoint. But guess what, what those contractors are doing right now? They're building lots of subdivisions.
Big ones.
And guess what they don't wanna do? Go into an existing subdivision and fix it. That's their worst nightmare, they, I mean, so it's going to be expensive, we know that. We probably underestimated how much it's gonna cost us, but we just don't know without quotes. But that's gonna just be one challenge that we're gonna deal with, but the city's prepared to deal with it, you know, we, we deal with that anyway, trying to get streets done and that kinda thing, so this is just one more thing where the city's gonna probably get pretty hot.
Okay, a lot of my questions, I guess, were preliminary, but I just wanted to get out here.
Go ahead.
One last one is, I'm assuming that, because it's cheaper at this point, that the, I'm assuming that the Johnson boxes or the boxes are gonna be in the front yard, correct? And you haven't made the decision, but all, all indication, because of cost, you said doubled in the back.
Yeah, so the design that we have right now is for them to be in the front yard, but there are certain aspects to that, because we don't have the quotes, where, like I said, there's additional trenching.
Correct.
The trenching between the backyard and the front yard could be, almost be a wash.
Well, it would be from the front to, to the, to your meter.
Right. But in, in the backyard, we're gonna have to do, so...
Right.
Just trust me on this, that the trenchings could be a wash, and from that aspect, really, then the only thing that's left is the difficulty, whether or not we can get contractors to do it, and the liability that may be involved.
I gotta hear you.
Those are the three challenges for the backyard, but there hasn't, there really hasn't been a decision made. The, the diagram from an engineering standpoint was to move them to the front, because that was the easiest thing, but it doesn't necessarily mean that's the way it's gonna be.
So, my question is, after all that, the location of the, mine's in the back, I'm assuming that, that if it's in the front, it's gonna be probably right, right in the same location as far as parallel to the front, correct?
Possibly.
It might not be direct.
Well, so the meters then, you're gonna say some...
It depends on...
If you have the two houses that are, actually the four houses, that are in the meters are probably on, on both ends, I know my neighbor is, you're gonna put that, that trench, I mean, that power unit in the front to go to the easiest...
The only reason I say that, I'll, we'll let Chris answer this question, is, you also have to think about it as a complete redesign, so really where it was in the past...
Oh, I see.
Has nothing to do with where it's gonna be in the future.
It could be somewhere else.
Because, yeah, when they bring those lines in down the street, they're gonna put the transformers where they make sense from the front yard, that will have no bearing or relationship to where they were in the back.
Switch to the back, very good.
Right.
Putting fewer, fewer homes on each transformer.
I get you.
Right. So there's gonna be more of them. I don't remember how many more.
Where I live, I have one, because mine's in the front, and it's my house and the house next door, it's on that side.
Right, so mine's in the back and I know the house, my neighbor and me are on it, I think, I don't even think...
There's probably four of you that are on it?
Could be, could be.
We could dig into that if you're really interested, but it's caperlimary.
I'm just wanting to get the questions out, so people start thinking, and that's it.
That's exactly the kinda stuff, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and y'all are doing a good job, I've been listening to a lot of the Castroville council meetings online.
Great.
Four hours, you don't gotta cut that.
Why do you think Todd always kicks me?
Well, so Darren and I, the problem with all the meetings is Darren and I both like to talk, and, and I prefer, I, people ask me all, all the time, how long is the meeting gonna be? I have no idea.
I can't reach him from where I'm sitting.
Right. For me, it's really important that the dialogue happen with the council. The last thing I wanna have happen as a city administrator is me walk out the door, them to have made a decision, and then me to have a one-on-one discussion with a council member, and they say, you know, I don't really understand what we did last night, or why we did it. That's, that really is a worst-case scenario, from my perspective, so I really try hard to make sure that they have the information they need. Speaking to that, for this particular issue, it's a much larger issue, especially if we start to look at whether we're gonna issue some debt. So part of the, the study that we're doing, and I know this is part of the misinformation that has been delivered to residents, is the cost of service study that we're doing. I think the, the logic that's been put out there is that the only reason you do a cost of service, cost of service study is to justify a rate increase. And while that can partly be true, because you need one to do, one to do the other, that is not the mission of what we're trying to accomplish. And in fact, I have the preliminary study, I just got literally 20 minutes before this meeting started. And it's showing that we need to do a rebalance, we need to look at our rate classes, we need to look at what water's charging, sewer's charging, electric's charging, and some of those need to be charging less, and some of them need to be charging more. So it's not about, well, we're just gonna increase rates. But it is about understanding for them, I mean, I can't advise them without that, that level of detail and that level of information, and they can't be asked to make a decision, but they don't understand the true impact to the taxpayers and the rate payers. And they, they shouldn't make a decision they can't justify themselves, and it doesn't make sense. And so we're, we're working really hard as a team to make sure that the information that we have is the best information that we can possibly get without being ridiculous. Because you can go into indecision, right? Where you get too much data and it's overwhelming and that...
Analysis paralysis.
We don't wanna do that here. I think the council's spoken very clearly that they expect results, and, and so that's what we're trying to do as a team, is to put plans together and deliver results for them and for the community at large. So part of the decision is, we gotta figure out what those rates really, where the rate is, and then we also need to figure out what's the capacity for debt issuance, and then where is that debt best used? And that's not just, again, that's general fund and utility fund, and it's not just electric, it's the whole, the whole ball of wax. So trying to show them that picture right now, for instance, couldn't, we have, one, they haven't decided whether they're gonna issue debt, that's number one. Number two, if they issue debt, I can't tell them how much they can issue as of today, don't know. Third, even if we could issue it, I don't know if they want to issue it. For instance, if we could issue up to 10 million, just pick that as a number, they may say, Scott, you're out of your bleeding mind, we should only issue four, right? For whatever reasons that, that might exist. So, that's why I was saying, it's, it's a little bit premature in some respects, because we're still gathering that data, but the good news is that hopefully by September, by the end of September, which will be the end of our fiscal year, we will have enough information to start making those key decisions. What do we wanna do, how much does it cost, what are we, how are we gonna pay for it? Are we gonna use cash, are we gonna use debt issuance, or a combination of both? Is there opportunity to bring some of these developers that are doing developments in, be a part of that, 'cause there is? They can help invest in our infrastructure in ways that move the needle. So we're doing, we're doing a lot of that. I think, to your credit, to the credit of the elector, electorate here, you've got some really good folks on council, I'm not saying that because they're my bosses, it's because they are very thoughtful about this, and so it's been a pleasure so far, and I hope it continues to be that, thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Solis, I'm at 101 River Meadow. And I just have a question, because I have the utilities in the back, but I also have a street light in the front of my property, so would that even be a consideration, or... So if we are moving it from the back to the front, then I'm gonna have two in my front yard, or how? I just don't know if that's even considered for the properties that have the street light on your...
So the street light, does it have its own box? Or you're just talking about the fact that you have a pole and you have a sunbox?
No, I have the pole, which is constantly going out.
Right.
But the transformer...
Did you know that we've, we've spent $3,500 replacing bulbs, mostly in the River Bluff area, from kids shooting them out?
Yeah, that's really not been the issue in my yard.
Okay.
My yard has just been power surges and burnt wires, so, no, I do understand that that is a big issue in every community.
It's been a real, we've had a spate of them, but...
I think, if I understand your, I'm gonna try and speak while I get caught up on the mic, I believe that your concern is that you've got too much junk up in the front?
Well, right now I have the transformer in the back, and I have the AT&amp;T in the back, and I have a street pole in my front yard. So, I don't know if that's being considered, or how that would be affected if the transformer gets moved from my backyard to my front yard, plus having that street light there.
Well, so, I think, I don't wanna get too deep into this, because we don't have that answer yet, that's why we'll have the next town hall. What I'd like to do is come back with the proposed design, they may not take those in consideration when they're doing that, but that's why, you know, we've been dealing with this over with the, with the growth, we're right on the entrance to Country Village Estates, and the communication hasn't been what it could be. And I think that if you have that communication up front, you start talking about it ahead of time, they had preferences where they wanted to put stuff, and it didn't go there, because we didn't have that communication working as smoothly as it should. So, I like to make a mistake only once, and so we wanna correct that communication by talking to you about it. So, I would expect that the next town hall, we would have the actual design, we'll show you where the transformers are planned to be, and there's always some way to, to do these slight changes. I don't think we could do dramatic changes, but we would, I don't think that there's any issue with us looking at that as we go forward.
It's too early to tell you where it'll be on your yard, but, or, I can tell you...
And that's not what I'm asking.
It matters to you, it's gonna matter to us.
Right, and I'm not asking for you to tell me where it's going to be, I just want it to be part of the conversation, because there's other houses in the neighborhood that do have that street light on their property, and I didn't hear it discussed at all yet, so I wanted to make sure that that is something that we are considering. Thank you.
Well, I think Chris, Chris would support that the, the line and the transformer will be on one side of the street or the other, so it's very possible it would be across the street, so, yeah.
Hey, Jan. And I'm Jan Warner, I'm at 102 River Meadow. We are the model home that was built, so we're the very first home there in the corner. And I'm the one that calls about that street light every time it's out, 'cause we're right across the street. So, we don't even have a transformer, I have no idea where it is for us, and it could be that it's at Julie's house, across the street. I have no idea. But if you guys would just take a drive down River Meadow today with that little bit of sprinkle that we have, our street is almost underwater. So we've got some places, we don't even have a curb at all anymore because of the shifting, so I'm really concerned if we would take and put those transformers in the front yard, just with the way, we're always underwater, and we don't need that to be a problem if the road isn't fixed first and we don't have those changes made. So concerned about just putting the power in the front yard. Now we're gonna be right back where we were, where you're always coming to River Meadow and fixing that, unless there's a way that it gets fixed, that if it's floating, it doesn't matter. I'm not sure.
I, I asked that question at city council, and they, they brought us what they found and everything, I asked the question about the flooding and moving transformers to front yards that are underwater because of the flooding.
Yes.
And you were gonna look into that.
Yeah.
For feeding an underground line through...
Transformers, everything.
Falls in one condition.
Is everybody's mailbox is tipped?
But, you know, there's, there might be a couple ways to mitigate that, not, one of them not being, so their pole is kind of building up the area of the transformer that is located, to get above the water line during flood conditions. The other is...
It's not even flood, it's just sprinkle.
It's just sprinkling.
It's just, it's just, yeah.
I live, I live...
It's just really bad drainage.
I live over there, I've seen exactly what you're talking about.
You know, it's dangerous for us to walk, because it's just covered in silk, is that what it's called? That's so, yes.
Yeah, and that's why I have probably a lot of the seven of those transformers, because of the, the material that's under the ground there. But another, another option would be what's just called a fiberglass sleeve, and basically it's just a big block that goes on top of the ground, it buries the ground, and it's open. It's just, there, there's nothing to make those five bits move, they could put, put some slack in, in the terminations of the equipment, so that it can shift slightly with the earth as it moves. So there's less impact on it, a much fewer...
So the electrical equipment would be done after the roads are repaired?
Oh, that's wonderful.
That's why, that's why, no, no. The reason why I was pushing for electrical first is because if, if, if the decision is made to move to the front with that boring equipment and everything, it's gonna tear up the road. So why waste thousands and thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, to fix a road that's gonna be eaten up? So that's why I pushed for roads first.
Electrical first.
And, well, thank you. Electrical first, and then we go for roads.
Okay, yes, build it up, do what we gotta do, but...
Yeah, and, and, you know, like you said, put that protective covering sleeve, whatever, to help with the water, if we go that route.
And we need to fix the drains then, yeah.
Give it a little bit more wiggle room to deal with the situation. And if I'm, if, it'd be good to know, under those conditions, where those areas are, just so I'm aware of the...
Oh yeah, no problem. It's the end of each cold, I can, I can, come visit.
You can actually just, you can actually almost see it from aerial.
Lot of the hill.
Yep.
You can see the outline of where the water is.
Can they just do, or the city, can they just do a drainage assessment of problems? I thought I just saw.
So we did, thank you. So we discussed this in a previous council meeting. So staff went through, and they found the areas that they have identified as problem areas. We've talked about, we need to look at a drainage solution citywide. I'm in, I'm right over by the park, I'm by the river, and all of the water goes either into my front yard or my neighbor's front yard. And, I mean, it's a terrible problem. We were all, I was literally in there bailing water out during the big storm, because my AC was about that far underwater. So, yeah, we have those issues across the board. You guys had the same issue over at your house. We have drainage problems. We're kind of, I mean, if you look at where we are.
I think it's ironic. The only people who don't live between rivers, like, because you have, you're on three sides, are the people who are buried. They're in the cemetery. That's the only, like, there's no houses there, but everywhere else, there's a river. You're in between them. Yeah.
So, yes, come on up.
Well, Ken, just real quick on drainage. I don't wanna give anybody a false impression. We have not looked at a comprehensive drainage plan. We need to do that. It will be expensive to do that. What staff did was simply look at what was the drainage areas that had been designed and engineered in the past and built. So like, there's one on Houston, maybe in Mexico, kind of that area. There's one on that that goes south towards the river. It hasn't been maintained. We looked at those types of areas where we knew maintenance hadn't been done, and we could do maintenance to flag the areas that were most important, so we could do those first, and then go hit the rest of them. But there's, that's gonna help quite a bit. It'll help mitigate the major flooding issues that we've had. But there's still a lot of, I mean, we're a city surrounded by river, so there's still a lot of issues when we deal with.
My name is Jennifer. I live on River Meadow with my sister. And about the transformers, because we have the transformer in the back, and I know you were saying something about 10-foot easement around it. So when that is refigured or whatever, if it's gonna stay in the back, like, where the transformer is, it's like this far from our neighbor's fence. So are those, is it gonna have to be moved? I mean, are lines gonna have to be reconfigured so that you have that 10-foot easement?
So I think the question is about how, if we went back to where they are right now.
Right, if they stay where they are.
Would we try to reclaim the 10-foot easement?
Right.
And the answer is no.
Okay.
And that's part of the challenge, is that there's so many things that have been built within that easement.
Right.
You can build certain things in easement. Non-permanent structures like fences, it's fine.
Okay.
But when you start putting sheds and pools in the easement, that's a problem.
Right.
And we, I don't think that people have done that necessarily. There's a couple of places where it appears there might be a shed that's in our easement. But again, our intention is not to move those things or try to reclaim that space.
Yeah, because some people are trying to.
We're just gonna have to contend with them, or the contractor is, which will make it more difficult, which makes it more expensive.
Right. Because some people are wanting to, like, fix their backyards and do everything, and it's probably a better idea to wait until this decision is made before you do anything? I mean, the homeowner does anything in their yard?
I would recommend not doing anything within, I don't know, y'all have, we don't have an alley, right?
Nope.
Yeah, so I would say. Yeah, so I would say just take, you can do whatever you want, as long as you're 10 feet off the back of your fence. But if you're trying to be closer to that.
10 feet off the back of the fence, or 10 feet away from the transformer?
10 feet off of your property line, which is usually, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it is. It is, but I'm being cautious. I'm being conservative. No, I think it's on one side or the other. I'm being conservative.
So do you, do you get, you understand the easement is the line? That's why we've got setbacks? Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the easement? All right. Marcus? Come up here. Come on.
So is there front easements on every property or?
It is not an easement, it is a right-ofway. So again.
There's a, there's a, there's what you call a parkway outside the curves. The right-ofways are usually 50 feet, the pavement's usually 30. So there's 10 foot of space that's actually city property that you get to mow and maintain.
That's why the pipes are underneath our front yards and not underneath the streets. And every time they rupture, there goes your yard or driveway.
Okay, and so I think the one last thing I wanted to cover, kudos to Scott. He's, I like the way that this council, that our current city staff is looking at things. We're looking at, how can we provide a better lifestyle for you? So Scott and I have been meeting up with service providers, talking to folks that can, I'll point my finger at you, looking at what kind of service you're getting over there. So I know that we have an issue with internet service in portions of River Bluff. So one of the things that we're looking at is, if we have to go through, if we end up, we determine that we need to do the full line replacement, we need to start boring and putting new conduit in, it's a lot easier, a lot cheaper, if you're already going in there to stick another piece of conduit in there. Conduit's kind of expensive right now compared to what it normally is, but our intent would be to try and put additional communications conduit in there to be able to support. I mean, I've got, I've got a map of the unserviceable areas of River Bluff, and like, this is from Comzoom from the cable provider, and it's a significant portion. And I don't know the full distance from the CO, but I think that it's less than optimal over there. So our intent would be to put something in, and overall, try to increase the availability of broadband. It's so much, I mean, COVID has pointed out the importance of that. I've been working from home, my wife works from home, and it's so crucial to have good internet service. You don't think about it until you don't have it. And so that is something else we're looking at. I.
Does anybody spend more than $150 a month for internet?
Yes.
Yeah? So what is it? Can you say?
Me?
Yeah.
I have two of them coming into my house. Since AT&amp;T is dog slow, I just, I just have them for the email.
Okay.
And they're about 60 bucks a month, because I cut everything down just to that. And then I went with Castroville computers, because on my side of the street, Comzoom doesn't exist.
Right.
So on my.
That's on River Trail on the south side.
Yeah. So I went with Castroville computers, and they fly. I get the 100, what, Mbps, whatever it is, and I pay $99 a month for that.
Well, what the mayor's referring to is a fiber-to-the-home initiative that we're just looking at. I don't want to give anybody's hopes up. We're investigating, seeing what it would cost. Projects like this, when we're doing them, is the time to consider that. But the idea is that we put in, it's not necessarily through Comzoom, it could be through whomever the provider is. We're talking about just putting what they call a duct bank in place, that is a communications network. It's got the conduit there, and then they run their wires, and they provide the service. But it's just something that we wanted to investigate and talk about, and see what the level of interest is.
River Bluff's interesting.
So I only brought that up because I want you to know that we are trying to do, we're trying to be really responsible and look at, this is about how great it is to live in Castroville. I don't think anybody here would disagree. This is a great place to live. We got some problems, we got some issues. We wanna deal with those, and we wanna make it better, more comfortable, allow people to be able to do what they really want to do. So we are looking at these things. Okay, so do we have anything else? I don't wanna cut anybody short. If you didn't get a chance. Right. Nothing is off the table. We've not gotten any commitments. We are trying to get with any service providers that we can, because like, I, as a city representative, as your representative, I don't have a preference, one over the other. I wanna make sure that you have it available. I would rather you have multiple things available, because then you have competition, then you have something that you can choose from. Ultimately, you get lower prices. So I wanna make sure that we're providing that opportunity to do that. You shouldn't have brought up another hot topic, but I just, you're right.
Well, strictly speaking, it's not on the agenda. It's what the city secretary's telling you, but it's my fault, because I actually asked him if he wanted to mention it, and he said no, so it's my fault.
Well, it's a part of, okay, anyway. All right. So I pushed the envelope. All right. So any other questions? Any other discussion? I was trying to close up. You're gonna get tired of mad at me. Come on up.
If you will take, can you take your mask?
My name is Jason Goddard.
Please, just to, we can hear you better.
My name is Jason Goddard. So when looking at the design, if we have our transformer in the back, is the wire's gonna have to go under the house to get to the meter? Is that how that would have to work, or is the meter gonna be moved as well?
The meter would stand in this place, and maybe potentially try to find a route there. It wouldn't go in the foundation of the house.
No, okay.
Because ours is in the back, so how do the wires get from, you know, the front of the house? They go around the back of the house?
We certainly.
Would that be trenched, or?
Oh, when they initially put it in.
Burrowed, or whatever?
I would think, I would guess that they're trenched, because that's what it would cost. I would guess that that would, that's probably.
Is there any flex, any flexibility where we're locating the transformers? Like, if you say, it needs to go right here, can we say, can we move it? Because we have a very narrow front yard area, and we have transformer in our backyard, and our neighbors have transformer in their backyard. There's not a lot of space in our front yards if we all have transformers being moved.
Right, yeah. It's, they can shift somewhat. Everybody's meters are pretty much fixed in the house, and that's our end goal, is to get that location. Everything's designed as best it can be as far as, especially voltage drop. You gotta be concerned with the distance that we're traveling. We can't take somebody else's secondary service through somebody else's yard, unless, we don't have anybody's easements. So we have to take that into consideration. So that really increases the distance that we have to travel sometimes, depending on where the chance can be located. So just, we are gonna identify exactly where all the meters are located, and locate those transformers respective to those meters' locations to maximize the number of services to get out of the transformer.
All right, thank you. But would it be safe to say that it's, because we've heard this twice already, which, that means multiply that by this is only a small percentage of the people that live there, so that's probably gonna be a major concern. So would it be feasible to look at not just the design, but the impact of the yard, in terms of if somebody's got a small yard, and now all they have is, instead of a patch of grass, a big metal box?
Sure, especially if you're, if you live in a cul-de-sac lot, you probably have at least the amount in the front. The front, I mean, the street spacing with the street, you know, that's probably gonna be the smallest part. Whereas if you're a guest down the straightaway, you're gonna have probably the widest lot, unless you're standing, I've seen stands around here.
Or my house. Because I own the, I own the lot that's open. That's my yard.
Okay.
That's not an empty lot. That's my yard. Yeah, they have the big, yeah.
So I'm not trying to impede anybody's, what is existing off people's front yard. Everybody has bell boxes in the front that are in the roadway in a lot of instances. Not trying to damage anybody's plants that may exist out there. So we're trying to be strategic in where we're locating this. And there's water meters, you know, we have to be concerned with water meters. There's a water line installed in everybody's watering right through some, everybody's front yard.
Yes.
And it's in the right way.
Yeah.
You can't locate transformers on top of the water line.
Yeah, and see, all of our, all of our water pipes and sewer pipes go through our front yards, not underneath the street.
Correct.
So. So like, the transformers, the transformer across the street from my house, our neighbors, Dinah and Kevin, their transformers there, and their water and sewer pipe go in front of their house, not down that side, down our side of River Trail.
Yeah, that's on the end of the street.
Yes, yes.
And that's where they ran it all.
Correct. So that's why those transformers can sit there opposite of our house.
But they also ran, even some ran over to my house.
Yeah.
And from there, I've got three of them.
Correct.
And one is, for one, it's not, it's not really a lot.
Yeah.
Then it also goes to the neighbor's door.
Yep.
And then there's one that ends in my front yard somewhere. They don't go.
Exactly.
And then there's one there also.
Yeah, the joys of River Bluff. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Scott?
We had Darren in the headlights here.
Where we're going through River Bluff, there's a bunch of existing transformers in the front yards. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're trying to utilize those existing ones as much as possible. I mean, we're just trying to get there, and possibly even use sort of the services going to the houses to reduce.
If they're already there.
If they're a reliable service, we're not gonna replace it. If it's a transformer that's been replaced, maybe we don't replace it, because it's our company to replace over it. Or it's, it's a reliable transformer. We don't need to spend that money to do that, you know? So we're trying to work with the existing system as best convenient. You know, the city's done some patchwork in there, the board and some cargo capable in there. We're trying to salvage as much as that, you know? There's, we're trying to work with the existing system as it's been advantaged to retire.
And.
Scott had it.
And then, like, we mentioned sprinkler systems and that. For those of us that have sprinkler systems, well, if you need to know the addresses of all of us that have sprinkler systems, the city has it on file, because we're required to get our tech valves tested every couple of years. So you can get, that way it helps you with your planning.
That's just a teenage drainage drop, you know? When they move the boring, they go to keep them.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know, but like, where they have to trench over from my, my yard over to the new houses being built. I have sprink, I have sprinkler heads right there. I have sprinklers right there.
And it may not be, I would definitely, but it might be an opportunity for homeowners to identify where the sprinklers are, and then understand that there might be a pipe running from this sprinkler head to this sprinkler head, so therefore, hey, there might be a sprinkler line here. So the contractor should be looking out for that.
Right.
Because there's no way they're gonna be able to locate that, otherwise. I mean, they can do the best due diligence to locate that, but if sprinklers are flagged.
Yeah, that, if we could get the message out to the, to the citizens after we decide and before the project kicks off, maybe we can get with the citizens, the residents to say, hey, can you put a blue flag where your sprinkler heads are? That way we know.
I don't have to do a lot of due diligence, okay? We're gonna have to locate, we're gonna have to pothole where all the utilities are. We don't wanna get a gas leak.
Oh, yeah.
That's probably the worst.
No, but I don't.
And water lines, sewer laterals. I mean, they're trying to do a lot of that, because that costs a lot of money. That's a liability that they're having to take on.
So these are, these are perfect examples of things that are in there.